Followed by the pledge, if you please stand.
Dear Father, I just thank you for today. I thank you for everybody that's present and I just thank you for this city. I thank you for the change of the season and the grass can greener and flowers flowering, or whatever you want to call it. Just thank you for our home and thank you for everyone up here who just gives us the wisdom to make wise decisions. We ask all this in your son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Flowers. Stuart had corrected me as called blooming, not flowering. All right, we have the minutes from January 22nd, 2025 to approve?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by McKeller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. R1, Leeann.
Good morning, ladies.
Good morning.
We are excited to be here today to talk about all things parks. Where else can you take a morning jog, enjoy a family picnic, and somehow end up in an unexpected game of tag with a group of kids you don't even know? But in all seriousness, our parks are more than just green spaces. They are places where our community gathers, where children play, where families create memories, and where we all enjoy a better quality of life. Today, I'll walk you through why this plan matters, what we've accomplished, what our citizens have told us, and where we're headed next. Most importantly, I hope this presentation highlights the significant role parks and recreation play in enhancing our city's quality of life and long-term growth. Our mission is to improve the quality of life for our residents and guests by providing superior parks, cemeteries, recreational and tourism opportunities, and our vision is to provide our residents with attractive outdoor spaces that are well-maintained while continuing to be fiscally responsible. So, under Tyler Parks and Recreation, we oversee all of these things. Sometimes people don't understand everything that's under us, so I just wanted to put this here. We are responsible for 32 parks, 130 medians, three cemeteries, four major trails, 14-acre rose garden, five splash pads, one pool, 45 athletic fields, the Rose Garden Center, the Berkshires Conference Center, Glass Recreation Center, Senior Center, the Goodman Grand Museum, the Mayfair Building, Keep Tyler Beautiful, and our urban forestry program. So why do we need a master plan? First, it is required by the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, which means it directly affects our ability to receive grant funding. But beyond that, it helps us prioritize projects and funding efficiently. It helps us plan for future growth based on real community needs, and it helps us foster new partnerships and opportunities. This is more than just a document. It's a strategic roadmap that ensures our parks and recreation system continues to thrive. Why parks are important. We all know that parks are nice to have, but they're actually essential for a healthy, prosperous city. According to the National Recreation and Parks Association, they boost property values. Homes near well-maintained parks see an 8% to 10% increase in value. They attract business and talent. Studies show that 87% of corporate executives consider quality of life as a top factor when choosing locations. They improve public health. Parks promotes physical activity, mental relaxation, and social connections. They reduce crime. Research consistently links park access to lower crime rates and reduced juvenile delinquency. They contribute to healthier air. Local park and recreation agencies in the U.S. support more than 1.1 million jobs, and that was in 2021. When we invest in our parks, we invest in communities' well-being, economy, and our future. So, what does our residents say? So, we put out a survey for our residents to take to give us some feedback about what they want to see and how they feel we're doing. So, to make the best decisions, we turn to our citizens to give us that feedback. We received 1,904 survey responses this year, and the message was clear. 85% want more parks and recreational facilities. 95% believe parks and recreation are worth the cost. 85% feel parks are just as important or more important than they were 10 years ago. The top priorities identified by residents are similar to the survey results we received in 2019, with the few items on the list and some of the items that turned up in the top spots this year were more trails, paved and nature trails, accessible playgrounds, pools and water features, soccer fields and practice spaces, and pickleball courts. This feedback has been critical in shaping our updated plan. Beyond citizen feedback, we took a data-driven approach by grading each facility. Our parks' leadership team inspected every park and facility, looking at safety, cleanliness, functionality, appearance, and age.
Well, can you go back there?
Yep.
To the ones that do with the ratings.
I don't know how to inform somebody.
The other way.
Sorry, guys.
There you go. Hold on just a second.
Each location received a grade, helping us prioritize projects and ensure our resources are allocated where needed most. This leads us to our new implementation schedule, which we will visit in more depth in just a minute. Before we talk about what's next, let's take a moment to celebrate what we've accomplished. In the last seven years, we have completed a wide variety of projects, such as revitalized Hillside, Gasaway, and Nobly Young Park. We've built new playgrounds at Wolder, Southside, Emmett J. Scott, and P.T. Cole Park. Upgraded Glass Recreation Center gym equipment, and we also improved the lighting, fencing, and restrooms at multiple locations. Each of these projects enhances safety, accessibility, and enjoyment for our community. Our work didn't stop there, though. Just this past year, we've been able to accomplish quite a bit, with some of the highlights being upgraded lighting at Faulkner Tennis Center, renovated Pollard Park, completed a new adult soccer field at Fun Forest Park, and we started the W.E. Winters Park renovation. And there's more on the way. Parks just aren't about spaces, though. They're also about experiences. Since 2018, we've seen major growth in our programming. We now have our fourth annual Pochella event at the Fun Forest Pool. We have shown 35 free movies in our park since 2018. This is our third year for our girls' softball league. Fall Festival at Glass Recreation Center brings in over 2,000 people. This is our 32nd Annual Corporate Challenge. Glass Recreation Center has over 2,400 active members, and our Senior Center has over 150 active members. This is our third year of Pictures with the Grinch, which is also free, bringing joy to 250-plus families just last year. Our second year for the Run Tyler 5K had over 150 participants this year. These events strengthen our community, promote a healthy lifestyle, and make Tyler a more fun place to live. Beyond recreation, we're also dedicated to beautifying our city and protecting our tree canopy. Over the last year, we've completed four park restroom murals, and two more will be completed in 2025. We've hosted five community events that engaged over 1,000 community members. We've planted 138 trees and hosted a tree worker safety program. We've wrapped a total of 107 traffic boxes in local art, making our streets more visually appealing. These projects enhance our city's character while promoting environmental sustainability. So now, we're going to get into the implementation schedule, which was the slide that we had stopped on earlier. We're going to dive a little deeper into this. So, for this fiscal year 2425, we are going to have the completion of W.E. Winters Park. That complete renovation should be finished. Stewart Park, we are implementing Phase 1 of the master plan. Legacy Trail Extension, Faulkner Park, our master plan update, which we are here now doing, and then the Wolder Park pond already has a new aerator.
What does it mean, grant-funded, on Faulkner tennis courts?
So, a group of tennis players out at tennis park had reached out, and they wanted to donate some money to help us resurface them because we didn't have it in our budget. And so, we helped them with writing a grant, and we got approved for it. So, for 2526, we will be taking over the Miracle Field out at Faulkner Park. The Hillside Park will get some updates on the soccer field side. We did the hillside playground side a few years back, but the other side of the park needs some updating. We'll have some general infrastructure updates at Golden Road Park, Fun Forest Park, and then we hope to do an in-depth study analysis of our fields and future needs. In 2627, we will be touching Lindsey Park, Oak Grove Park, Rose Rodman Tree Creek Stabilization Study, and Wolder Park. While Wolder Park has also seen some upgrades, there were a few things that we didn't hit the last time we renovated it, which would be the court renovations, the soccer field addition, and some general updates. 2728, we will touch Crescent Park, City Park, Rose Rodman Trail Creek Stabilization. Hopefully, we will be able to implement Phase 1 of that study, and Faulkner Park. 2829, we'll hopefully be able to implement Phase 2 of the study of the Rose Rodman Tree Creek Stabilization, Children's Park, and Lindsey Park. 2930, we should be ready to update our master plan by then. If needed, we will have athletic field updates. Windsor Grove Nature Park will get some updates, and so will Herndon Hills Park. 2030 to 2031, we will do a tourism facility grading. As you may see, this only involves our green spaces and our parks. It does not include our facilities. But we will also renovate or upgrade Northside Park, Glass Recreation Center, the Tyler Senior Center, and Fun Forest Park. And then fiscal year 2032 to 2035 encompasses the rest of our parks' plans and facilities that were not listed already. At the end of the day, this plan is more about more than just parks. It's about health and wellness, giving people safe, accessible places to be active. It's about economic growth, attracting families, businesses, and talent. It's also about community pride. We're making Tyler a better place that we're proud to call home. When we invest in our parks, we invest in our future. With your support, we can ensure Tyler remains a city where parks are a priority. I want to thank all of our dedicated Parks and Recreation staff. Some of them are here today. They make our city parks and recreation programs and our facilities beautiful and successful. I would also like to thank Kristi Knip for her hard work on this updated master plan. This was a critical project, and it required a lot of patience, which she's really good at, and along with a long-term vision mindset, which she handled with such grace. This was taken to our last park board meeting, and the board recommended unanimously to recommend this update of the master plan to City Council. In accordance with requirements of the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, any revision of the master plan priorities other than an update of accomplishments must present a new priority list justified by additional public input, along with a new resolution adopting the new priorities. So, the recommendation today is to request that the City Council consider adoption of a resolution approving adoption of the updated Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Master Plan and resolution for the city of Tyler.
All right. Any comments or questions for Leeann?
I have one question, Mr. Mayor. I have a text that says, can you explain what the medium is, the 132 medium that was on your list?
What is it?
It said 132 medias.
130 medians?
Yes. They said, explain that.
Oh, our Parks Department maintains all the medians that have landscaping on our streets.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, I got one. Leeann, you said you had 194 responses on the survey?
1,000.
1,000. How many surveys did you send out?
So, we had our survey open for four months. We didn't send them out. We had them updated. We had them posted on social media. We did a few public meetings. We did one at Glass Recreation Center, one at the Rose Garden Center. We also went out to the Senior Center and Glass Recreation Center for people that maybe didn't want to do it online. We had paper copies for them to fill out. Yeah, so, and then we kept it open. We actually extended it one more month to make sure that we hit our goal.
Leeann, when we were talking about the tennis courts at Faulkner Park, last year and I talked, if that group had raised some amount of money, the city was going to match it. Is that grant fully funded, or is the city still going to match whatever they raise?
It is not fully funded. However, they have still brought in a very large contribution other than that grant. And so, they are still bringing money in, which we appreciate very much, and we will be matching that to help with the Faulkner Tennis Center.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do want to point out that I'm still amazed seeing the, you know, it's not that it wasn't used, Pollard Park, but the transformation after that was renovated, especially the pickleball courts. I mean, that thing is used almost constant. Anytime it's not raining, that court is full. So, yeah, I'm glad to see that there was a list on there to add more pickleball courts because they're well-used.
Yes, sir. It was not on our list whatsoever five years ago, not even anywhere on our list. So, it was in some of our top spots.
All right. I will make one comment. You know, I'll never forget the day. It was April the 5th, 2015. It's the day we opened up the playground at Burkhil Park. And prior to that, the city did not really fund many parks. And subsequent to April the 5th, when you see everything that's taking place, it's phenomenal. The energy and the funds and the excitement that's been put into parks all over the city. I mean, every part of the city. So, you know, I see Stephanie back there. It was on the Parks Department Director back in 2014, 15. And now you, I'm just going to say, thank you for what y'all done. Thank you to the staff. I mean, you've changed. Y'all have changed our parks totally. So, thank you. I got to give you a hand.
Thank you, too. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to just say that the citizens of District 5 would love to share in that excitement, and hopefully we'll get a park one day. So, just.
You got to work on that, Leeann.
You know, it's funny. It's funny Lloyd, Councilman Nichols says that. When we did the Burkhil Park project, we went out and raised about $1.2, $1.3 million privately. So, if Councilman Nichols can go out and raise $1.2, $1.3 million privately...
I'll be asking you for some seed money, Lloyd.
All right. I'd like to send a motion to approve R1.
I'm moved.
Second.
Got a motion by McKeller, second by Haney. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Chief Cobble, read that.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I have M1. It's a request that the city consider authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement, a contract with Lone Star Tactical Buildings LLC in the amount of $129,712.86 for the purchase of two Fire Class A portable burn structures pursuant to RFQ 25-014. In 2022, the council approved for us to buy one of them right after our main burn building was declared unusable. And so, then we found out that the portable building that we purchased only had one burn space in it. The state requires two burn areas in order to receive your license as a firefighter. So, this will complete that as well as give us some search and rescue areas to be in the contained area. The really good thing about this is that it's portable, so we can pick it up and move it to the new site when we move the training center, and we will not have to purchase it again for that reason, for the new site, as well as you guys have already approved the funds for this purchase as part of the 2425 budget. So, the request is that the City Council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Lone Star Tactical Buildings LLC in the amount of $129,712.86 for the purchase of two Fire Class A portable burn structures pursuant to RFQ 25-014.
Any questions for Chief Cobble?
Moved to approve M1.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Nichols. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Hey, Heather, are those your new glasses that are making that noise?
No, they are not.
Her glasses talk to you.
Something else.
Oh. Sorry. Side track. Nikki?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Nikki Ingram, and I'm a project engineer for Tyler Water Utilities. I'm here today to present agenda item M2 for the 2025 Golden Road Water Treatment Plant Filters and Clarifier Rehabilitation Project. So, the Golden Road Water Treatment Plant can treat 28 million gallons per day. Currently, the filters are the bottleneck of the plant. Due to their age, we can only actually treat 22 million gallons per day on a consistent basis. We can treat 28 million gallons per day, but we're constantly having to backwash the filters, and it's unsustainable. So, Tyler Water Utilities has been upgrading the filters in a phased approach. Filters 1 through 4 were rehabilitated in 2016. Filters 5 through 8 were rehabilitated in 2022. Filters 11 through 14 were rehabilitated in 2024. And we have 16 filters. So, we have four filters, which are Filters 9, 10, 15, and 16, which the filter media, it's been more than 20 years since it's been replaced, and they still have their original clay underdrain systems from 1965. So, the lifespan of a clay underdrain is about 50 years, and the lifespan of the filter media is about seven to 10 years. The TCQ also issued an alleged violation requiring the city to rehabilitate the clarifiers in 2019. The city of Tyler is responsible to rehabilitate all four clarifiers by 2027 under the compliance plan. And so, clarifiers 3 and 4 are currently being rehabilitated with filters 11 through 14, and that project is expected to be completed by May of 2025. So, this current project is with Pape Dawson Consulting Engineers, formerly known as KSA Engineers, and they will design the following. The rehabilitation of the four remaining filters, which will include removal and disposal of existing filter media and underdrain blocks, and the installation of new filter media, underdrain block, and surface wash systems. And it will also include the rehabilitation of two clarifiers, which will include the removal and replacement of clarifier mechanical equipment, sledge valves, and associated electrical and controls. The design will also include electrical service improvements to address water intrusion and the installation of a medium voltage service disconnect switch for high-service pumps 5 and 6. So, in the pictures below, this is clarifier number 3. On the left is the before picture, and then the picture on the right is the after picture from a few weeks ago, after we're about wrapping up the rehabilitation on it. And so, the project is expected to start in March of 2025 and be completed with final sign by January 2026. We'll bid the project through February and March of 2026, and then award the construction contract in April 2026. And it'll be approximately a two-year construction period that will last until April 2028. Part of that construction length is due to lead time on equipment, and also, we can only have two filters and one clarifier offline at a time between October and April. And so, we can't have any filters or clarifiers offline during the summer and spring months. So, that is part of it. The expected construction cost is $7.5 million. So, it is my recommendation that the City Council authorize the city manager to execute a professional services contract in the amount of $1,085,100 with Pape Dawson Consulting Engineers LLC for the 2025 Golden Road Water Treatment Plant Filters and Clarifier Rehabilitation Project, and adopt a resolution reserving the right to reimburse expenditures with proceeds of future debt.
Any questions for Nikki?
I do. We went pretty far past the useful life of these filters. And I know your tenure only goes so far back, but do you know, do we have something in place to address these kind of at the correct time, or maybe it was addressed and it wasn't approved to spend the money? Do you know?
So, we're currently, we're doing master plans every five years, so that should address these problems and make sure we're maintaining our equipment at the right times.
Move to approve M2.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Nichols. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Nikki. All right, we're down to the consent agenda. We are going to be pulling CA2. So, we want to approve the consent agenda as presented, save and accept CA2.
Move to approve the consent agenda, accept CA2.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City managers report.
So, Mayor and Council, a couple of items of note. One of the projects that was approved with this year's budget and that sometimes gets asked about is the South Glenwood Ground Storage Tank Demolition Project. And so, this project, which will remove the South Glenwood Ground Storage Tank that is out of service, is still on track. Bids will be open for the demolition and removal on Tuesday, March 11, with intent to award at the council meeting on Wednesday, April 9. Construction is estimated to begin in early June and be completed by early August. Also, for our downtown improvement project, bids were due for the downtown improvement project, which will include the west side of the square and then also the square around, you know, improvements to the streets and to the sidewalk portions around the square. So, that was, were due on last Tuesday, March 4, but no bids were submitted. We did inquire about the bid opening previously and expected two bidders based on continued inquiries. Our engineers at half and associates have been following up potential contractors on issues that kept them from bidding. Several issues were the difficulty of getting subcontractors for electrical work and other specialties, cost fluctuations on steel and other materials, and phasing to keep access to all businesses on the square open. Staff is working with Fitzpatrick Architects and half engineering on options for bidding quickly, and also talking to Smith County about potential options as well, related to different ways that we could kind of look at this project. And then finally, Tyler Water Utilities is moving forward with the Taste and Odor Study out at the Lake Palestine Water Treatment Plant with its pilot testing treatment technologies to improve the water quality and address taste and odor concerns. If y'all may remember, this is also an item that was in this year's budget. And so, that one has been an interesting as far as pilot study that has been looking at ways to remove the geosman and the taste that comes with that from Lake Palestine, and really as far as improve the quality of the water that's put out at the Lake Palestine Water Treatment Plant. So, expect further updates on that as that pilot study continues.
All right. Any questions or comments from the city manager? All right. We are going to go into executive session. Bear with me as I read through this. Executive session, item under Texas Government Code Section 551.071, litigation to deliberate pending or contemplating litigation or settlement offer involving Louis Pabon versus City of Tyler lawsuit, file number 24-0702. A litigation, due by its nature, is an ongoing process. Questions may arise as to trial tactics or settlement offers which may need to be explained to the city council upon occasion. The city council may need information from the city attorney as to the status of the pending or contemplated litigation. And our settlement offer led to the litigation matters listed above. Any final action by the city council will be taken in open session. So, we're going to adjourn and go to the executive session, and we'll be back. You can stick around or go enjoy your morning. Thanks.
Please stay. Please stay.
Now, Lloyd, that's that person on your shoulder that talks to you. All right, are we on?
Yes. Says we are.
All right. We are back from executive session, and we do have an action item. Councilman Nichols?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the settlement agreement for the lawsuit Luis Pabon versus the City of Tyler, cause number two-four dash zero seven zero two dash A, in the amount of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Second. We've got a motion by Nichols, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? Also, favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right.